For the October fourteenth Policy and Planning Commission meeting at six thirty one P M. Due to the virtual format of today's meeting, I'd like to start by providing some guidelines. First, participants attending by computer and others who may be attending by phone, or all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Use your microphone when not speaking. If you have technical issues, try joining the meeting using a different device such as a smartphone or tablet, or use the call-in information in the meeting invite to call into the meeting. And overview for tonight's meeting will be holding a public hearing and making recommendations on the two thousand twenty-one comprehensive plan amendments. And but first, we're going to go ahead and make attendance. So Kristen, can you please call roll?
Yes, I will. Sarah Bader. Here. Nina Milligan. Nina, your mic is very quiet.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm here.
You're very quiet.
Very quiet. I might unplug this and just go back. Okay, thanks.
Matt Monahan.
Here.
Joy Lewis.
Here.
Jason Voice.
Here.
Richard Zaragoza.
Here.
And Ron Fall.
Here.
All are present.
Excellent. Very good. And next is we're going to go ahead and approve the meeting minutes from September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. And are there any corrections to the many meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none. Meeting minutes are approved. And Kristen, let's go ahead and open the meeting up for public comments. Before we start the discussion. Go ahead. Do we have anybody from the general public who wants to speak tonight?
I have someone who signs that wants to speak in a public hearing, however, I'm not sure about in public comments. So if there's anyone who would like to speak during public comment part and not the public hearing part, would you please either raise your hand or star three? I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. All right. So I guess we formally close public comment tonight because this is a hearing. Next on the agenda item is the public hearing itself. And we're going to talk about the proposed two thousand twenty-one comprehensive plan and zoning and map amendments. Kristen, our senior planner, will present the proposed two thousand twenty-one amendments and zoning amendments. And Kristen, the floor is yours.
What what are you all seeing right now?
We're seeing your presentation, but also your your full screen.
That's what I thought. It won't. It switched on me. There's no button to. Let me try this again. I apologize. One second. I had this all set up for the meeting. Okay, I think this is what you all are going to have to see.
Kristen, you may be able to click on the slideshow and do the start from beginning on the very top next to the the animation transition animation right next to it. There's a slideshow thing.
But I'm clicking on slideshow down here. It's on slideshow. Well, this is what you get to see tonight. Actually, you know what I'm gonna do? I apologize. You guys are seeing everything. Yay. Work?
It worked.
Okay, excellent. Just I know that there are two, like two or three slides on here that would have been way too small for you all to see the other way. So I needed to make sure this happened the right way. So yes, our proposed two thousand twenty-one comprehensive and zoning map amendments. So tonight we are going to present and then we are going to take testimony. And you all will deliberate and then hopefully you will make a recommendation to the city council. So first, we're going to talk about the land use element. In particular, right now, we're going to talk about data. And I should apologize. I did not realize that when I converted this to PDF that all the track changes went away. So luckily they are here and we can talk about those now if you'd like. So first, data. As you all may recall, in two thousand sixteen, the city council asked us to start tracking our units toward our state adopted two thousand thirty-one housing and jobs targets. And so this is where this table and the next one that you'll see came from. Every year, we submit information regarding units that have been completed and units that have been permitted to the Office of Financial Management. And which thought it was an emergency. I apologize. Um, to the Office of Financial Management. And then they come back to us confirming our number of housing units and our population and our households. So this year, from April second, two thousand twenty to April first of two thousand twenty-one, we gained or completed three hundred and fifteen new housing units, which took us to seventeen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine units, and it took us over our target to a hundred and forty, a hundred and four percent. Our target was five thousand seven hundred and fifty, and we are now at five thousand nine hundred and ninety-five. As for jobs targets, we went the opposite direction. So this one, we actually get from the employee employment security department every year, and it runs with the calendar year. So it's January through December of two thousand twenty. And we don't provide them with information. They give us, we provide them with some, but they are the ones who really are the data keepers for this. We lost over three thousand jobs in two thousand twenty, likely due to COVID. That's just my thought on that, not a fact. But that took us down from almost fifty-three percent of our target to about thirty-eight percent of our target. It's okay. And we're not, we're we're, there are others in that same boat with us. This year, we also, as part of the growth capacity study for the state and growth targets, did our capacity study for the city. We have about five hundred and fifty-one acres of land available for residential property, just over twelve thousand, which equals approximately twelve thousand units, new units. And we have two hundred and fifty-seven acres for commercial property, or actually, I should say, non-residential property, because that includes industrial as well and mixed use, which totals about twenty-one thousand new jobs that we could accommodate. One is area, and one is what the development allows. I mentioned OFM and that we provide them data and they come back to us with housing units, households, and population projections. And that's what this table shows. So we have, as I mentioned, seventeen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine units, just over seventeen thousand households, and households are the number of housing units that are estimated to be occupied. And then our population and then group quarters are counted in with that, too, to give us almost forty thousand people, which is crazy, because when I started here, there were eleven thousand two hundred and twelve. That was in two thousand and one. I should let you know, this might, it might change. We got a note from the state the other day that the census data has just come out. And because everything had to be done electronically this year, and no one could go door to door, some of this might change. But I think we'll probably wind up reconciling that next year, because we won't get the data until November. So moving on to land use designations and zoning. We have nine parcels that we're looking at, and the first is Blackberry Park. All of these were acquired by the city. This one gives us given back to, was given to us by King County. It's been a park for a long time. It's currently zoned, single-family, small lot. It is, has a land use designation of loaded city residential. Our proposed designation for it is community facilities recreation with a, or that's the zoning with a, with a designation of community facilities. It would remain as a park. And the question was asked last time if the Parks Department had started working with the neighborhood to improve the part, because there will be improvements, and yes, that process has since started. I should note that I have both Jennifer Fink here from the Parks Department and Megan Curtis Murphy, who's now a consultant for us, to answer questions later on if you, if you have some. The next one are the Newport area designations. You all actually saw these when we took a tour not too long ago. But two parcels, both are currently have a multifamily residential land use designation and a village residential zoning designation. The property on the left, right here, is proposed to be community facilities recreation, and we'll have a park in this area, seven parking spaces, one for handicap, and then this area will remain as open space right here. Lastly, we have six parcels, and it's the Harvey Manning Park Extension. This property was purchased several years ago. It was called the Burisma Property. But now it's proposed to be the Harvey Manning Park Extension, because here is Harvey Manning Park, and there will be trails that connect through this area. So these three parcels are zoned, single-family estates. These three parcels are zoned, single-family suburban. They are all designated low density residential, and they are all proposed to be a community facilities open space. This is part of, we used some King County funds to help pay for this, and part of that agreement was that it would be space. Should those be approved, any or all, the land use designation map and the land use element will also be changed. Reflect that. So moving on to Old Town. Old Town, we proposed just to do the implementation tables and status tables, but we did find a couple of changes that needed to be made here. One was, this was just simplifying this policy to say facilitate mobility options to improve access for Old Town. And the other was, it said strive for the Mobility Master Plan to identify efforts. That was before it had been written. Now it's been written. So we just changed it to implement the Mobility Master Plan. But to what we were originally supposed to do, we updated status table, and you'll recall, you can't see it here. We had it in two different sections. We had the list of immediate, of all the actions, and then we had a table of all the actions. So instead of duplicating, we're just going to remove the list and put it, the whole table in there. So it's one space. We just updated it with things like we have minor challenges with some of these. This will be done during the Title eighteen update, because we looked, said landscapes, not just for Old Town, it's for the whole city. So we're going to update that then. And do pervious surface, because we need to wait and see what the storm and surface water master plan says about doing that. We complete the architectural design standards for the SFD zones. And then, let's see, moving on, just, these are just some samples. I didn't pull them all. We just updated these to ongoing. Some are complete, some are on track and ongoing. And then longer term, look, we've had, either, we're doing that. They're either complete or they're ongoing. So we moved a couple around as well. Capital facilities element, we were asked by Parks and City Council to update this, because there were some things that were left off and some things that were misnamed. So, for example, the Tiger Mountain Community High School was no longer coming, Community High School. It's actually Gibson Lake High School, so we changed that name. We added Green Barn, Julius Baumpool, the Senior Center and the Community Center. And we did have these two new schools lumped together, and it sort of looked like they were named. So we just clarified that they're two separate new schools that have not yet been named. So those are the, there. Lastly, moving on to land use element, climate change goals and policies. As you all know, goals and policies, these are just like the Mobility Master Plan, just like the Parks Plan, just like the Utilities Plan. The goals and policies from those plans are pulled and put into the comprehensive plan so that those other plans are implementable, because the comprehensive plan is really the guiding document and the legal document for those. So you all saw these on the twenty-third, actually. And these will be included. I'm not going to go everyone. We have Megan here later, if you'd like to ask any questions about these. We did clarify here that we were decreasing energy use. We, whoops, sorry. If I, the energy use is actually natural gas and electricity, you all asked, and also made sure that, longer than I thought. Made sure that emergency services would be available to conserve a hundred percent of Isitqua population, not just fifty percent Isitqua population. So just to let you know, this will go to the council study session. If you all make a recommendation tonight, it will go to the council study session on November ninth, and then on December sixth, council would potentially take action on this. That is my presentation.
Thank you, Kristen. And so for commissioners, are, do you have any clarifying questions you would like to ask? Go ahead and put it in the chat. I have to open chat. Chat's blank. Excellent. Joyce to the rescue. So Joy, Commissioner Joy has the first question.
Thank you, Chair Fall. Commissioner Joy Lewis here. Since we just saw K, it's a little easy to ask this question. I was curious why shelter wasn't called out on IK one, when we're, like you mentioned, we now up the number to a hundred percent of our forty thousand residents, which is nice. We don't have to pick and choose between them. But shelter was specifically not mentioned, and I was curious if there was a policy choice for that or why that was left out.
Doris, this is Megan Curtis Murphy. So originally, the last time that we talked about this, the target that we were discussing was just shell, shelter oriented. So that's where we were at that fifty percent number. Been taking feedback from community members, boards and commissions. We wanted to look a little bit more holistically and reach that hundred percent. So we're still looking at the the fifty percent for for shelter right now, but making sure that we would be able to have all the food and water and other services available for a hundred percent of the population. So expected that we wouldn't necessarily need buildings available for a hundred percent of population, but there's situations where maybe we would need food, water, those sorts of resources.
Is it possible, do you guys think about adding a sentence or language to be able to at least have the policy include where we're at and where our intentions are with shelter? It's just to have that to go from that complete drop off. I was just noticed it.
Yeah. Great point. I think this is one of those targets that's really pretty new for the city and in you know, something that we're just starting to talk about now, we have a new emergency manager on board who just started, I believe, late August. So we've been starting to have these conversations, and he is already busy updating a bunch of different plans. So I think he's going to be looking at those numbers a little bit more. But for the purposes of the Climate Action Plan, that we thought that the the food and water resources would be the most appropriate for this plan. But I think we'll be able to see those other numbers in some of the more emergency services targeted plans.
Okay, I'd certainly like to throw up a red flag saying that I appreciate having that, even if it is a separate target, right, that we're not anticipating needing that same capacity need, that it is, that language is still present somewhere in the document. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Joy. Commissioner Jason, you have the floor for clarification.
Thank you, Chair Fall, Commissioner Voice. Mine's just a point of clarification. So on page twenty of eighty-six, I know these numbers are kind of funny. That's our jobs table. I believe it was L three. So just so I'm aware, it, there was some, some reading in there that kind of mentioned that all of our cities are having these jobs numbers issues, I think, senior planner Lisa just alluded to it. So am I understanding this right? Basically, we've revised that number down from twenty thousand to fifteen thousand. Is that correct? That's our new two thousand thirty-one goal? Is fifteen thousand new jobs, not twenty thousand?
No, our twenty thousand is still our, is still our target, our two thousand thirty-one target. It's just that we are only at thirty-seven percent of meeting that and not thirty-eight, or not fifty-three percent. Our target remained the same. We're just not as close to it as we used to be.
Okay, I thought I saw something that mentioned. There, page twenty.
Oh, I think you, maybe thinking of potential proposed job targets?
Right. There was some number that had mentioned, this number has been revised down to seventy, seventy-five hundred.
Right, not yet. It's proposed right now in what's submitted to the Growth Management Planning Council, GMPC, and King County, but it hasn't been approved yet.
Is that what the city's going for? Is the reduction?
That's what we're going for.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty obvious. You look at the table, the Great Recession shows up, and then the pandemic shows up. So it's I think the culprit's there in black and white. But, okay, that was one. And then just real quickly. I noticed that on one of it, page fourteen of eighty-six, it says edit policy F one, but then your slide just showed K one. Page fourteen of eighty-six, clarify B one, and again, it showed up on your slide as G one. So is this just what happens when the climate, the Isitqua climate pla, plan gets taken? That's how those numbers are going to re-gear itself, right? Because I was like, I was looking at these numbers. I was like, where are the, I don't see it. And then I was like, oh, it's over here.
Yeah, I apologize. I should have caught, yes, the numbers change when they come into the comp plan, because it has to mesh in with all the other policies that are already there.
Okay. Thank you. That's okay.
Okay, and thank you, Commissioner Voice. Are there any other questions, commissioners?
Looks like Commissioner Milligan has a clarification and a question.
You're on mute.
I'm unmuted, so I hope if I can shout. Can you hear me at all?
Yes.
I take my question back, because Commissioner Lewis asked it so well.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Milligan. Any other clarifying questions or comments? Okay. I guess now we will go ahead and open up the public hearing or the open up for public comment at six fifty-four. I was about to say public hearing. We are in a public hearing. So Kristen, do we have any members from the public that would like to speak?
We do. First, we have Ann Fletcher. I'm going to make you a panelist. And you are unmuted. You can turn on your camera if you would like.
Good evening. My name is Ann Fletcher. I live at two five five Southeast Andrews Street, and I'm a resident since nineteen eighty-seven and a member of the People for Climate Action Isitqua Chapter. To all the Planning Policy Commission members, I would like to talk about the Comp Plan Amendments in the Land Use Element. First of all, Element E. We are on the right track, I think, by replacing the current climate goals and policies in the comprehensive plan with those from the draft Climate Action Plan. And I, too, had to make that switch on the numbers that you were talking about. So my written comments, I think, had both. So it's probably a little confusing to some of you. But I, they're, they're high overarching goals, and I believe they are better than the other ones, because they are much clearer, more specific and actionable. And they will be useful to the city departments, because they are now working together on climate, and they have many interconnected plans and programs, and I think they will be really helpful to the city departments. They expand on important, oh, I'm going to go back. They also reflect some updates in knowledge about how to mitigate and adapt the climate, climate change. And they expand on important areas that are relevant to climate change that we didn't, we didn't, we weren't as aware of before. Things are changing fast. The F, the number F, the bench, they, it benchmarks carbon emission reduction goals, which I believe was suggested, and I think that's really great to have that as an overarching goal, and it also brought in community involvement, which was requested. So I think that's wonderful. It also has a section G, where there are goals to increase energy efficiency and decarbonization in both current and new buildings. That's our biggest carbon emitter. So that is a really great goal. In H, we're promoting better systems for current and new neighborhoods to use cars less and and promoting transit and electric vehicles. Transportation is our second biggest emitter, so it's great to have a strong goal there. In section I, not only are we trying to do something about our, our landfill, which is a complicated area, and it's more complicated, but the overall goals, I think, are okay. The the, the one part that I was pleased to see was in there was about advancing careful consumption of carbon emitting products. Because that's, that's the first step. And then if you, once you have them, you have to get, get rid of them. So then J brings in the terms carbon capture and carbon sequestration and a stretch goal of fifty-five percent tree canopy in the natural systems area. And in a new section is for community resilience and well-being, which I heard you talking about. So I think overall, it's a really great to have that aligned, something that we've been wondering how that was going to be done, and looks like the city's found a way to do it. So we really appreciate that. And I wanted to mention elements A through D real quickly. They, you just went through the growth management information, and it was interesting that those four things are all factors that will affect our carbon emissions. And the fifth element, the new climate goal and some policies is, needs to be really strong enough to address both our current and our new growth emissions. So that was made really clear in this report. And I think that, that just looking at the fact that we have already exceeded our two thousand thirty-one housing goal units, that was, that was amazing to me. And I'm wondering, we seem to be growing pretty fast. Are we able to keep up with the needed infrastructure and properly protect our environment with that? And with a new goal of thirty-five hundred more units, if we meet that early, I guess we could increase it again. And I guess it makes me wonder, well, how well are we managing our growth in our growth management? The jobs going down, the lower goal is a reality. And it means that people will reside here if we keep adding units, but they will drive somewhere else to work possibly. And I, I guess I wanted to mention that when we figure, I don't know how we figure out capacity for growth and how they figure out the acres, but the more buildings and accompanying cars will add to our carbon emissions, unless exceptionally strong building and transportation mitigation actions are, are taken. And then the other thing that I learned about last night at the Environmental Board is the tree code. And the predicted development in elements A through D will result in a continuous erosion of our tree canopy, which supplies shade, carbon capture, storm water control, and wildlife habitat. And unless we protect the rest of our trees and plants significantly and significantly plant more trees in other places. So I was wondering, do we have a plan for that? Because it's pretty clear that we are having a big impact, not only from what we have now, but also this big growth that we're going to continue to have. This big growth that we're gonna continue to have. So thank you very much and thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Uh, Kristen, do we have any additional members of the public who'd like to speak?
We have one other member of the public and if you would like to speak, if you go ahead and raise your hand, that would be great. And if you can't find, figure out how to do that, which I never can, um, you can just message me too. Now, there's no one else who would like to speak.
Okay, uh, very good. So we'll go ahead and close the public here, our public comments at seven oh two. And I guess now we will move on to, the proposed motion is to recommend. Um, approval of the proposed twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments as presented. Would anyone like to make a motion for that? Uh, Jason, you're on mute.
You have a comment, Chair Fall. I did have a question though, but uh, I'll go after the comment, just a quick question.
Okay, uh, Commissioner uh Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Fall and Vice Chair uh as well. Uh, Commissioner Joy Lewis here. Um, I was under the um, impression that we were gonna be doing our, the discussion right now, Chair, it's how you have, how it's been laid out before.
I'm gonna have some comments. I'm gonna jump in here. The way that we're, the way that it's supposed to be, so we're trying to fix that, is that a motion is made. And then a motion is seconded and then you may deliberate. And then you can make a recommendation. So that's, that's the order of things. The way they're supposed to be, we just haven't always followed it, we're trying to follow it now.
So what if we were amending the document, then we, the motion would then need to be amended?
Right. And then you would vote on the amendment to the document. You would vote on the proposed amendment to the motion, yes.
Well, then I will wait for when we're ready to do, to deliberate, uh, but I, since I have the floor, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Uh, to adopt the land use element um, in the comprehensive plan as submitted by staff.
Okay. All set. Second and third.
All right, we'll go with uh Matt Monahan for a second. Okay, uh, all in favor? Actually, we wanna first deliberate on this. Okay, now that we have a uh, an active, sorry, this whole thing's process has changed a little bit. So I'm learning as we go as well. Uh, so now that we have a, uh, amendment has a second on it, we're gonna go ahead and open it for deliberation. Hey, and uh, let's see, Commissioner Voice, would you like to voice your comment?
Thank you, Chair Fall. I just had a, a quick clarifier, but it, it really doesn't pertain to what we're doing now, so it was more of a question about how. How staff figures out acreage and jobs. Uh, that one kinda struck me as interesting. So I don't know if anyone can answer that real quickly. It really doesn't pertain to anything. This was more for. My information or perhaps somebody out there who's gonna watch this later, who's going. I, per square foot, how many jobs is per square foot?
I can answer that.
Need to get one job.
I can answer that. So acreage is, it's land area. Pretty much, so, you know, if you wanna be really straightforward, you look at all the single family acreage. And no commercial can really go there, no non-residential can go there, so that's your residential acreage. It gets a little more confusing when you break it into the mixed use zones. Whereas maybe you, based on what's happened in the past, forty percent of that acreage might be developed as residential and sixty percent might be developed as. Commercial or non-residential, so that's how that mixed use is broken up and it's based on, it's based on history in that area. But acreage is just what's on the ground. So when you go to determine units or jobs, units is easier. It's based on what can be developed on that property. So if that property can only go to twenty-five feet. And one dwelling unit per five acres or four and a half dwelling units per acre. Then you estimate, you know, based on that, I have this many acres that are zoned that way, so this is the number of units that could go there. And you look at both vacant land and redevelopable land. And redevelopable land, there are few factors that are involved. You look at, you know, how much, when the property was built. And the likelihood that it, you know, could be potentially taken down and replaced. And maybe there's only one parcel on, one house on a space now where it could have two. Or you look at mixed use and you say, okay, well, this could actually can go up to eighty-five feet. And it has, this is the FAR, this could have about this many units on there. So, you know, we work with King County and they have a formula out there too that helps us determine that. Um, as for jobs, it's a little different. Jobs is um, per square foot, per employee per square foot and by type. So an industrial. Job or an industrial building may have one employee per seven hundred and fifty square feet. So you're looking at your industrials own land, what the FAR or what the development regulations allow. See what could go there max. You actually don't go to the max, you kinda go a little below that, cause max isn't likely gonna happen, it's gonna be, market's not. Dictating that right now. Um, and then commercial, retail's more like four hundred and fi- one person per four hundred and fifty square feet and then offices like. One person per three hundred square feet. Now, there's COVID. And I know somebody's gonna ask me and nobody knows yet, but the effects of COVID are gonna be on this. And it's a twenty-year cycle, so they're gonna come back and visit it in two years and may change up some of the numbers. Yeah, based on, does that help?
Thank you, seeing the plan at least, and it does help.
Good.
Okay, and now we have a. Well, Joy, did you wanna go ahead and present your question or your comment or your?
I do, thank you, Chair Fall. Um, I wanna stick right now since um. Since Jason brought up um, our jobs and housing numbers, I think this is a good place if we wanna have a discussion about this. Um, to start with that, before I get to the land use um, policy section, um. You know, I think we were all expecting that there was going to be a hit. And I think we all, uh, who have been, the people have been charting these numbers, knew that we were already pretty aggressive on our housing numbers, so it wasn't a huge surprise. At the same time, it's concerning to see such a discrepancy, right? We should be able to take that. Twelve percent hit a little bit easier because we were so far regressed already on our numbers. Um, on jobs specifically. So what my concern is, is that I really wanna see as we're addressing the incoming housing capacity numbers that we'll be getting for our next target. Is that we address how we're going to be doing it right. And I think specifically looking at the jobs that Izua needs to reach its twenty thirty-one goal. Means being able to say, well, what kind of housing are we getting? And I'd like to hear more from the city, not necessarily in this meeting, but I wanna. Throw up the issue of saying, how are we going to address that missing middle? How are we going to get the housing that we need? To support the jobs that we're trying to get. Um, and not having that discrepancy that's been existing in the housing we're getting versus the jobs we're trying to get. So, um, I think that it's something that's worth having further discussions at another time, and I just wanna bring up that concern. Um, of basically of saying that that missing middle continues to be missing and I think that it's closely aligned. To the jobs that we're wanting and hoping to fill, that they're pretty closely interconnected. Um, and I'm going to wait, yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna jump in real quick before I moved on to the land use, sorry.
I was, I was gonna weigh on the land use, so I wanted to hear if anybody else had any comments on it, so I will re-enter. My space in a minute, cause I wanna, I think this is a, a, a good conversation for us to be having and.
Okay. Um, so first, you had mentioned that we were off track last time on our jobs. We actually weren't. We were halfway through the twenty-year cycle and we were at about fifty-three percent. So we were actually right on track, almost toward meeting our twenty thirty-one targets. And this was just a setback. Um, and when we get our new targets, it's not going to be added to the twenty thousand, we start over, it's a reset. So we start with whatever we have and we don't have to do what we didn't hit plus seventy-five hundred. It's just the seventy-five hundred if that's what's approved. So it's actually going to be fewer jobs. If, if that is what our target is, then what would be remaining for the twenty thirty-one target, if that makes sense?
That's if we make our target, right? We, we far and away made our housing target. But when we talk about, we're still looking at making our twenty thirty-one target, right? We're not. We've already know we're gonna miss it.
So, right, we know we're gonna miss it and it actually starts over as soon as these are adopted and in twenty twenty-four is when the targets would take over, we start over. So if we haven't hit our targets, that's okay. And you know, part of it was that when we did our first targets back in two thousand and six, we had anticipated that three huge parcels of land up in the Highlands were gonna be Microsoft. They had options up there and then they left, so, you know, we knew we, we, we weren't gonna hit what was adopted in two thousand and six. It wasn't likely, but that's okay. We reevaluate, we reset, and then we start over in twenty twenty-four with whatever our new adopted targets are. So if we didn't hit them, that's fine.
Cause a big part of why we were at our fifty-three percent was due to the cost, is due to Costco, right? The Costco, Costco partnership, right? So when we start looking at the jobs that we need to be able to support our um, our live play work in Izua, right? Um, it, it certainly took, um, it was nice to be able to add that into our numbers, but it didn't necessarily factor into what the jobs are needed in the community. Community for us to be sustaining a healthy population. So, um, it's nice to be able to reset our numbers and to say, this one didn't work, so let's find the next one that does. But I think that there's a connection that needs to be figured out between gaining the space for middle. Um, middle income jobs and middle income housing that hasn't been absolutely addressed. We've done a nice job of trying to address affordable housing. And the market continues to give us very nice and very expensive housing in Izua as well. But being able to connect these two numbers is something I'd like to see more from the city about how we're actually saying, how do we, how do we make this? Again, not, I'm not expecting.
You know, it's, it's, it's one of our topics.
The whole picture.
It's one of our topics on our work plan as, and as part of our housing implementation plan is. Our housing action work plan, housing strategy work plan, there we go, um, is missing metal. So it's, it's absolutely on our radar. We talk about it often. Um, and hopefully it'll be addressed sooner rather than later and I know that. You know, as I've mentioned it before, but when I was talking targets with the city council, they wanna come back and have another discussion about. Infrastructure and services and everything, meeting our growth. Our capacity's a lot bigger than our proposed targets are. Um, we wanna make sure we meet all of it, so they wanna have more conversations about that as well.
Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. Um, actually, on the jobs uh target, I know Commissioner Milligan is next here for a question, but I wanna inject here. Uh, work from home is a changing dynamic. How are we gonna prepare for possible work from home and would that be counted in the jobs that were here in Izua? Um, and at Microsoft, a lot of contractors and a lot of people are working from home. They live here in Izua, would they be counted possibly in the numbers? And if they're not, should we be including them in the numbers so that we have the infrastructure to support those work from home people?
They are counted.
They are counted.
Yes. Yeah.
So if they are counted. Then our numbers should actually be going up instead of down because of all the work from home people.
Well, except that people actually lost their jobs during COVID or left their jobs during COVID. Now again, this is me speaking, but based on what happened in twenty twenty, um, I'm, I'm gonna guess that that's probably what it was.
How do we collect that work from home information?
That is something that needs to be figured out. Um, and I'm gonna leave that up to demographers and the Employment Bureau. But as I mentioned earlier, the King County and the state will go back in about two years and relook at. How COVID affected, how, you know, how people working at home affected the job market. And even the housing market and the commutes, that kinda thing, but it's just too early for them to figure out what effect that's had so far.
Understood, okay. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor up to uh Commissioner Milligan, she had a question.
Well, really, I was commenting why I went offline there, but I will take the moment, if you give it to me. At first, I'd like clarification about. What was included in the motion? Can someone reiterate for me? Are we talking about the jobs, housing in the motion? Yet, or are we just talking about the land use changes?
Right, sorry, you cut out there for a little bit, but right now we've just, we're getting, um, there are questions about the jobs and housing targets, that's what we've been talking about.
Yes, I understand what we're talking about, I just don't know what the motion is, so.
Oh, the, the motion, motion was to approve the twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment as presented.
So the zoning map, not the. Um, chart for housing and jobs.
It would be all of it.
All of it.
That includes the comprehensive plan and the zoning map.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. I didn't know if that was separated out into three sections as per agenda, okay. In that case, um, if you can hear me okay, okay, if you can hear me. Uh, I do wanna comment, cause this is the opportunity to reiterate uh some of the things that I think are important to the community in regards to our um, housing growth. Uh, we have um, repeated interest in where we put our housing growth and. Take this opportunity to. Folks that I'm keeping an eye on this and that our housing growth is intended to go into central Izua as per the central Izua plan. That's what we promised and should do it. Uh, the other is that we have uh intentions, sustainability and other issues to redevelop our parking lots rather than. Developing areas that have a lot of green space, for instance, our single-family neighborhoods are also part of our green canopy. To redevelop single-family, it's would be antithetical to that goal. Also, uh, one to point out that um, when we're talking about where our housing growth is, it is in the central Izua plan, we have. Um, excessive capacity to handle our growth targets, so there's no need to look any further. It would be a challenge uh to, if we, the capacity is so much higher than our targets. That uh, there should be no need to go elsewhere. And because transportation and uh impacts from pollution and um, other issues. Transportation, traffic, convenience is also important to the community. It's another reason why we focus our growth in central Izua, so I'm just, this chart comes up. Folks, and I'm gonna keep looking at this and you guys can keep helping me because pressures. Cities are to. Spread the development over in our single-family neighborhoods and uh, attention of our city. So I'm supporting the motion and adopting the reports and the zoning, just wanted to take an opportunity to say that, appreciate the time. Thank you, Chair Fall.
Thank you, Commissioner Milligan. And are there any other questions or comments? Or anyone want to? I think Commissioner Lewis, you had uh, another comment that you wanted to bring up at a different time? Or bring that up now, or did you already cover that?
Thank you, Chair Fall. I uh, wanted to go through the land use policy. I had a couple of things, this is um, one of the best um, insights we've had. Um, to a couple of things that I wanted to clarify. I'm uh, I'm really pleased, I should say, that we've had so many opportunities to view pieces and parts of this because seeing it together as a whole. Um, I think this comp plan is very successful. Uh, I see a lot of amazing work that's gone into it. Um, I did wanna point out, um, I suppose on our packet, it's gonna be page thirty-two and this is land use policy I three. Um, I appreciated the introduction of the language, it says, and reducing overall consumption. Um, and I was hoping that we could make that language a little beefier. If it were up to me, I think we'd say something like, while also reducing. Um, by saying Android, it, the way the sentence is framed, the um. Production and materials and reducing overall consumption, it's, it owns separate concepts. And yet it's thrown into the end of the sentence and I think that having language that makes it a little bit stronger, we would benefit from it. Uh, so again, my, my best suggestion was while also reducing. To try to um, help that, I don't mind it sitting along with the policy, but that was something that I saw. The next one I'm gonna go to is gonna be uh J one. See if I can find it so I can give you the language. And on J one, I know everyone is gonna wanna gloss over this, but on J one, we have the fifty-five percent tree canopy coverage. What I think hasn't really been addressed is why staff said, we met our target, we wanna keep it at the fifty percent and. The public has pushed back and said, we want a greater amount of tree canopy coverage and so they put it at fifty-five percent. But I haven't actually seen any scientific data that's been presented, any kind of um, equation that says this is the right number. Why is it fifty-five versus sixty? Um, when we. Why is it fifty five versus sixty when we know that we need to? Be able to accommodate not only keeping the tree growth that we have, but planting more. I would just like to be able to see a greater backing behind what this number is. But I know that this is something that necessarily isn't something everybody wants to continue to talk about. It's nice that we have the extra five percent, so it's an easy, it feels like an easy win, but I do think that it's something that's worth talking about as we. It comes before our commission quite frequently is the tree canopy coverage. The next thing I had was going to be on section K, and this gets into the compact schools. I really love reading this section because it's something that we've talked a lot about. It's something that we've wanted to have further clarity about, and I think that there is room for improvement in this section. We know that when we're working with partners on this new proposed concept of how we're doing our schools. That having our policies laid out being very crystal clear will aid us later on when we're actually trying to put together how we're going to be utilizing this. For example, I'd like to see on L ten A, I'd like to have a stronger use of language to move towards banning. Oh, sorry, that's, sorry, if that's on ten, I'm, I'm on the compact schools, which is talking about. Sorry, my notes got together. So implementing policies throughout the municipal code. That are going to talk about shared resource language and to help buffer the idea, this is L six. That resource intensive activities need to collaborate and share and have mixed use facilities. I think that language is touched on, but I think it's something that we saw in the Providence Point community. We had many members of the community coming to us and say their main issue is the issue of lights on fields, the space that's being taken up. And the school district wasn't willing to budge whatsoever on this. And so I think it's something that's going to be coming up with compact schools that I'd like to see greater language. Really clarified on that. It's something that the community continues to talk to us about. And this is a great opportunity to be able to use this for doing compact schools. And then again, moving on to L ten A, which is. When we talk about pesticide use, being able to have a stricter use of language to move towards banning the use of chemicals. Rather than just addressing them, I think it would be worth having stronger language there. So that's my my comments on the land use policy, and if anyone else has any comments on it, I'd love to hear.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. Are there any other additional comments or questions? Okay, I'm going to start naming. Okay, Commissioner Monahan, did you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Zaragoza, would you like to add anything?
Nope, thank you.
And Commissioner Bader, would you like to add anything?
No, thanks.
All right, and Commissioner Milligan. Commissioner Voice, you've been very quiet today.
No, thanks, Chair.
All right, okay, so moving forward. I guess we will take a, we'll open this up for a vote. If there's no further discussion, we will proceed to a vote on approving. Proposed twenty twenty one comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments as presented. There are no amendments to that. So I guess the next part here is, Kristen, will you please take a roll call vote?
I will, but first I want to make a clarification. There was a note that Commissioner Lewis made regarding I three. That she would like to include two words while also producing. Instead of just producing. And. I, we need to hear from the commission on whether that's something that you want to do. And I don't think it needs to be an amendment, but it would be to the motion, it would be something that we would add to the findings of fact.
Okay, Commissioner Lewis, would you like to make? Kristen, you said a.
So just, just a, just a vote. I don't think it's changing the motion. But it's just making a small change to add those two words to I K or I three.
I don't think it's an additional motion, but what I was opening up is the floor is to have anyone else see if they had any similar reactions when, and it doesn't sound like anybody else did since everyone, since you went through the roll call. So it was my suggestion. It sounds like I stand alone in it, so.
Well, I want to clarify, did anyone have, was anyone resisting to Joy's comment? Because maybe we were all going along with it and saying, that sounds like a great idea. And I want to be clarifying, I'm not making, not taking position here. But do we want to support Joy in her changes? Or do we want to move forward as the. Comprehensive plan was presented in its words? Commissioner Milligan? You're on mute.
Up tonight, we're going to do a test on this, Kristen, later and try out my gear and see what works best in this platform. Thank you, Chair Fall. I want to support Joy, but I do not want to amend. Motion because if I'm looking at the same language, we're talking about land use policy I three. I believed in my, I support what you're saying. But the words and I think are strong enough. It's not saying or maybe something. There, and I think that our words don't say and. The words. I think it's fine the way it is, and I say that in support of what you're saying, not in a disagreement.
Excellent, okay. A quick show and nods and. Or what Commissioner Milligan had said. Okay, excellent. All right, so. With that being concluded, I guess now we will move on to the vote. Or the proposed amendment or for the proposed motion. So Kristen, do you want to go ahead and open up for a roll call vote?
Sure, so this is Kristen. The motion on the table is to recommend approval of the proposed twenty twenty one. Comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments as presented, and I will go ahead and call roll Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Milligan?
Aye.
Commissioner Voice?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Zaragoza, you're voting as a regular member tonight.
Aye.
Commissioner Bader?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fall?
Aye.
The vote is approved unanimously, seven two zero.
Okay, excellent. And so we will close that out and. We will open up for reports. So Kristen, are there any reports the city would like to make tonight?
I do not have any reports, however, Minnie Dollywall is here, the Community Planning and Development Director, and she may have one.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. You know, nothing major to report, but I just wanted to follow up with you all. You know, we discussed the trees landscaping and open space topics with you on September ninth. And we got a request from the Environmental Board that they were, they wanted to participate in the discussion. So we had a meeting with them yesterday that we shared the information we had presented to you and got some good feedback from them. So on those topics. Additionally, Parks Department, you know, Parks Board. Has another meeting coming up on October twenty fifth that they want to have a conversation about those topics, get a little bit better understanding. And so we're working on presenting, you know, giving them an opportunity to ask questions and such on those topics on October twenty fifth. So all of this is going to get folded back to you when you, when we prepare the draft document for you all to look at. But I just wanted to kind of let you know that we are soliciting input on those topics from other boards as well. The other thing I wanted to share was on Title eighteen, we had an affinity group meeting on building and economic development topics. And in that we reached out to property owners, developers, people that had interacted with the city, architects and others. Of their experiences and their points of view at a very high level. Obviously, we don't have the draft code ready, but parking was discussed and, you know, there were multiple viewpoints on parking. What is the right parking? What is the impact to commercial spaces? So we're gathering all that input and we're going to prepare a summary of those comments that we received from them. And when we come to you with those topics, we will include that information. And the next on agenda for you all for Title eighteen is zoning and land uses topic that we'll bring in a couple of weeks on October twenty eighth. So we're continuing to work on that. We've had some good conversations with the Title eighteen ad hoc committee, three council members on zoning and uses and receive their feedback. So you will have some of their input in when we bring that back for your discussion. So that's all I have, Kristen.
I do have three other things sort of not related to council reports that I'd like to mention. One is that I was thinking during the meeting and I went back and I double checked in the transportation element. I actually below the comp plan policy number, put the mobility master plan number as well in parentheses. I will do the same thing for the climate action plan and that will help. It'll avoid some confusion. Second, we were supposed to hear goals and policies on the stormwater and surface water master plan. Tonight for personal reasons that had to be postponed a bit, but it's coming back on December second. And then Title eighteen, you'll notice there were no comments this time included. We didn't forget there weren't. But we've started receiving them again, so those will be in your next packet, okay? Just in case you're wondering. You all very much.
I do have a question or a feedback thing if, I don't know at what point in the agenda we will have that opportunity. I think this is the report section, so I can wait.
Well, actually, it's the next one. So other business announcements. So Minnie, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Fall. What I wanted to just get some feedback on is, you know, as we're developing some of the sustainability codes. And looking at what will be helpful and useful for the commissioners. One of the ideas we were exploring was perhaps taking a look at some sustainable buildings, you know, that have been built. In Isaguas and in the region, Bullet Center is one of them and they arranged tours and some. So but they, due to COVID, they limited to about ten people. So we were wondering if you all were interested in touring some, some buildings that are sustainable. Those may be local ones because then you can kind of see what a LEED certified means on the ground as you kind of debate those discussions. You know, we had a good meeting with the Swedish folks and their buildings are carbon neutral. You know, what do they really mean on, and so that idea we're exploring, but we wanted to kind of get a sense from you all if you were interested in a tour. And we, we haven't figured out the logistics, so obviously if it's more than four commissioners, we have to do it in a notice. I know there's a lot of meetings on your agenda and with the holidays coming up and all that. So just, you know, you don't have to answer us now, but if you can, or if you're ready to say you've nodded your head or say yes, maybe. Okay, sounds like there is general interest. So we'll continue to develop that and share with you some details on when. And now it's getting darker earlier, you know, winter is not really the great time to do, be doing these. But if it happens to be during, is there a general preference after the workday? Yes.
If I might speak, I would say our, I guess our planning policy time, I don't know if it's available for everybody, but. Six PM, six thirty PM. I mean, if we're talking local, we're all local.
Yeah, it it's just being outside in the dark and, you know, rainy weather is a, is a little tricky thing. But, okay, you, everyone prefers after, in the evening timeframe?
It's, it's easier, but if, if, if the daytime is all that's possible with some. With some early warning, I can make it happen.
I second.
I'm available after two.
Okay. Right, so we'll, we'll keep thinking of that and, and share with you as we develop more details.
Okay, excellent. And with that, any other comments for the good or the order before we close out? Hey, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn at seven thirty six. That's another record. Inside of an, almost inside of an hour. I think it's like the fourth, fourth meeting we've had that's been inside of an hour. That's just amazing.
Stick my, there's presenter and you're guaranteed, all right.
And, and great job to Kristen for presenting all of this in such a really good way. So, you know, that goes a long ways. It was well presented and organized too. And very efficient discussion, very good points from you all.
I looked at that packet and I thought we're going to be here until midnight. All right, well, good night, y'all. Thank you very much for coming and have a great weekend.